This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpine City Council meeting, July 19, 2021. Call your order, please.
Councilwoman Hess here. Mayor Potem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noak is excused. And Mayor Walagora.
Here. It's rise to the pledge. I do leave.
To the Republic, for its saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty as strong.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Modifications to the agenda?
I have one modification. I would like to remove fourteen B under new business, the recreational marijuana. Next, on the next agenda.
And for what reason? Just asking.
Because we're missing a council member who wants to be here. I have to know.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? And Councilwoman Hess? Motion carried.
Approval of the minutes for regulating closed second of June 6, 2021. Any issues or corrections for that? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. The only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address counsel. We'll start with our live guests. Please come to the podium and state your name. And then when we're done with live, we'll go to any virtual guests.
So the live doesn't include me then?
The live doesn't.
Don Gilman, 220, is great. Some of you may recognize me. I've been through a lot of years here, Arborman, building official. The reason I came up to the microphone is I read the agenda of supporting documentation. Can I write in support of the city and chairman's report about Marina? I think that it's a long, it's a long time overdue. I had been at Arborman's with the whole. I think with the team that the new manager and the team that's in place at the city right now and the demographics changing in the city, this is the time. I know it's always scary territory because you can try to put good numbers on that. But I did it a couple of years in a row and always figured it was going to turn out better than it looked once you did it. And I think with the staff that you have now and the, just the improvement that I've watched down there this year, I think everything's going to be fine. I'm glad to see that the city is looking at the, as opposed to being a liability is actually a front door from the water side because it really truly is. Once you develop that into a destination, I've had my, I've seen them people at the brown trail right now. They're running on 25 miles to the homes to try to catch the bigger bank bill because they know we're there. And once they know we're here and somebody's on a good website, which never has, was under pressure, the voters are not really.
Thank you, John.
Angie Skibas, that's 35 River. Been a while. I missed a few meetings, so I don't know what the purpose was to all this, but I've heard a lot of opposition, where people out in the city, as to the new fees that are being added for the use of the pavilion and the discussion. I was here where Mike Noak had the comments about, I live in the city, I have a big family. If I want to use the pavilion, I'm going to use it. I pay high taxes. I don't know, a lot of talk was out there that people with new ideas possibly coming from Rachel Me, working in another city and seeing what they do, but we are not that other city. So I'd like to take them into consideration that we don't want a whole bunch of new fees added because we already are paying our taxes and those are the facilities that we are paying taxes to use. So, thank you.
Anyone else live? Anyone virtual, Charlie? No indication? Well, we're gone. The consent agenda is next. To be allowed in the amount of $546,855.93. B is a renewal of the auditing services with Straley Lamp and Creneline PC. C is a budget amendment request to decrease general fund balance by $6,300 for increased insurance renewal for IT.
I move to accept the consent agenda as planned. Second.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We've got a couple of presentations this evening. First is Here on Humane Society, some of the annual report. Mary Egan is here.
Good evening. I'm Mary Egan, the vice president of the Here on Humane Society. And I really want to start by thanking you, to be a volunteer for not only valuing the work of the Here on Humane Society in spirit, but by also continuing to maintain a service contract with HHS to house, treat and care for dogs and cats brought to the HHS shelter in the city of Alpena. We are in the city of Alpena. We at HHS are very proud to be Alpena's no-kill animal shelter, serving the community for nearly 40 years. And it's an honor to be in partnership with the city, something we never take for granted. When I spoke with you in January, I detailed how 2020 was another year record year for the number of animals serviced by the Here on Humane Society. HHS took in 601 animals last year, which is a tremendous number of dogs and cats for which we cared, housed, fed, tested, vaccinated, and provided veterinary care. The number of animals in Alpena County HHS has cared for has for three years straight been nearly triple the number of animals helped in 2017. And that is an astounding number. It's indicative of the problem Alpena has with an overabundant pet population chiefly represented by an excess of unaltered cats. Right now, we at HHS are in the midst of kitten season and are completely filled up at the shelter with felines. And I really do mean completely filled up. HHS has worked with both PetSmart and the Vizzle Pet Foundation to get cats adopted, though kittens keep coming in as fast as we can clear a kennel for them. If you're in the market to add a new for every family member to your home, please come see us at the Here on Humane Society. We can help you. Through July 16th, HHS has taken in 338 animals, 328 of which came from the city of Alpena. In the same time period last year, we had taken in 286 animals. So obviously, if you do the math on that, we are on pace to have the record year. HHS continues to have solid adoption rates with 264 of the 338 animals we've served at the shelter this year so far being adopted and 22 returned to their owners. We are heartened that with the support of the city of Alpena, 338 animals who have resided at our shelter within the city limits this year have been tested, treated, vaccinated, and either have been or will be surgically sterilized, which will pay huge dividends in the community for years to come. This year, the board of the Here on Humane Society and volunteers have worked hard to continue to improve the building as staff is busy caring for the animals. Part construction used their Living Our Values program to help HHS remodel and refresh our indoor adult feline playroom. The room was stripped down to the studs and totally rebuilt, providing a more pleasant, enriching, and better smelling, I cannot state that enough, environment for cats and humans alike. The playroom had new catwalks all around the room at multiple levels and even a television where cats can watch their favorite shows. A lot of that involved bird feeders. Really gripping. Continue, we continue to make improvements for the benefit of the animals to our existing building at the Here on Humane Society, which again is in the city of Alpena and still on an unpaved road. You know, I mention that every time. Alpena Community College's Manufacturing Technology Group has continued to volunteer at the shelter and recently dropped off a small bank of kennels they modified to better serve our needs. Right now, it's being occupied by a very robust litter of kittens that are loving it. We're using a $2,500 grant awarded to HHS from the Community Foundation from Michigan to help cover the cost of spaying and neutering animals who come into our shelter. We keep adding to the balance for our new building fund at the Community Foundation. We will be participating in the Alpena Farmer's Market garage sale on July 31st. If you'd like a bargain and some unique finds, come down and see us. Got a lot of great things, plus kittens for adoption. Again, just want to point out, you kittens. So HHS continues to operate a massive ongoing bottle and can bribe that has greatly aided us in being able to stay open during the past 18 months when the pandemic was a constant threat to our financial and physical safety. In case you didn't know, you can drop off recyclable bottles and cans outside HHS anytime of the day or night. We hired a member of the Alpena Community College Leadership Group to work part-time, taking returnals back, and she's done a wonderful job. Our staff at HHS is continually learning about new testing that you can do with the veterinary testing equipment we were able to purchase last year, which saves HHS money in the long run. We have a great monthly newsletter. If you're not already on the mailing list, please let us know so we can add you. The HHS Facebook page continues to grow and has nearly 15,000 followers. We continue to operate a retail gift shop inside the shelter to attract new clientele and help support the cost of pain to care for the animals. We're open Monday through Saturday. Please come visit us from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And Monday, meet and greet events with animals from HHS spending part of their day in the community and areas supporting organizations continue at Enjoy Salon and John Nap State Farm. We hope that Alpena City Hall welcomes us back when you are ready. We greatly enjoyed having kittens here and we've got a lot of kittens that popped and resolved. So thank you once again to the city of Alpena and management and staff for supporting and valuing the work of the Here on Humane Society and the animals we serve. We truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. Do you see file that?
I move to receive and file.
Forward.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is a presentation from Target Alpena. Both says report, Tim Annual, I spoke to him as well. Mike Mahler, Director of Economic Development.
Well, thank you. Nice job, Mary.
Thanks.
Would you like to say yeah?
So good evening, everybody. It's the, we're doing an update for the guest's first half or second half of your fiscal year here. Last time I was here, they're snowing around and so things were dramatically different than they are today. With the pandemic largely in the rearview here, my role has kind of turned to more traditional economic developer role here. So I don't intend to read the report to you. I mean, I have lots of questions, there's specific questions you have perspective including there, but I will touch on some highlights here. Since the last time I met, we did, the pandemic was kind of getting to wind down. We did handle one more grant program of a state in Michigan, and that was the survival grant program. So I just, I just recap the statistics in here. I mean, Alpena County, we have 170 applications, 62 were approved. 62 in the area of small businesses. Highest awards were 15,000, lowest was 3820, but the average grant was 10,000. We had several Alpena County businesses that received grants, about three of the NBC rounds that we handled. So with respect to developer activity, I know a lot of these things in the report, so I was sitting there going over this, preparing it. I know you're familiar intimately with a lot of these projects because it took city council action, maybe allow for this or allow for that. So I know that a lot of these things that I have in front of you, you're probably already aware of. But I also wanted to just, just add that not every project going on in Alpena is necessarily working through target offices. There are people out there doing these things on their own, who don't need our help but want our help. And so this report, while this kind of represents the things that I'm involved in, not necessarily a comprehensive look at everything going on in the community. But I'll start with the commerce lots. So in May, we sold two of our remaining six lots. We had three sets of two-dimensions lots. We sold two of them in May to Propane Plus, and then he decided to use those lots for another purpose. And so came back in the last month and said, I want to buy two more lots for the intended purpose, and I bought these four. And so we closing those lots today. So that leaves two remaining lots left in Commerce, in Commerce Park, that are under an option agreement right now, which could potentially become a fishing wildlife office. So I'll touch on that here for a moment. So matter of fact, the developer who has the option in those two lots, if they are not successful with fishing wildlife, then they've expressed, based upon their visits up here and see all the activity going on, that they may just buy those lots anyway with the idea of a build and shoot kind of a program. And so I would entertain that as long as we have some sort of development agreement in place because we don't want them to buy the lots and sit on them in perpetuity. We want to have them committed to doing something with them. Otherwise, I'd sooner have them back that, you know, maybe we could sell them again. Just touching on the DEA, I know that you're intimately aware of all the things going on in the DEA mostly. Certainly the social district, we know, should be pretty much ready to roll, maybe even this week. I know the city's putting up temporary signs, and I know we've got a lot of the pieces in place. The move of licks into our downtown has certainly helped. I kind of shared at the end of my report here that I was driving through town last Tuesday, and I saw three days of just a lot of licks. They all have licks packs, and they're wandering into Cedar and Ritz. And I thought, yes, perfect. First of all, we didn't have as much foot traffic up in Dunce as we do today because I got baby licks, and then I got Cedar and Ritz, which all seem to be attracting people who are visiting our area. So just nice to see the foot traffic and nice to see that licks is, you know, it took, I think, a little bit convincing to get them to want to retain a store in Alpena and the mall. Should change, so I'll call it a success that we're able to keep them here and move them into our downtown. Here with the benefit of the first grant program that we initiated, we created a new one for relocation or expansion grants in the DEA with our fund balance, allowing for four $10,000 relocation grants. They have the first recipients of one of those grants. So again, we put it in place for that very purpose, and it worked to the, it worked as designed. Touching on fishing wildlife, so I mentioned this report a couple of different times because Commerce has lots that potentially could be a fishing wildlife location. The city also has property north of town, which is also another developer that we have talked to, has interest in potentially putting that same fishing wildlife location there. I met with the GSA folks on the city site, along with the developer and the folks with fishing wildlife. Remains, so my expectation is, so there's two in the city that I'm working with, developers for that location. I think there's a couple more that I'm not working with. It's going to be in the city. My hope is it ends up on the city lot, frankly, just because I love to see some development in the 95 acres. So I think once we get something started in there, it'll draw more attention to it, and I think it'll, it'll help us attract more investment. So anyway, we won't probably know for a few more months yet who's going to get an opportunity to bid, but I expect that the folks who look at the city's probably in downtown will get that chance to bid that for, for their long-term contract. I mentioned DCIP 2021. You all recall last year, and they authorized it this year, you're familiar with that. But I just want to state that last year, we did a good job. This year, we did a great job. I think the collaboration between city staff, between base leadership, really to put our best foot forward this year. And I applaud the fact that you're willing to put in 30%. Hopefully, that it will get the attention of the folks in the Department of Defense who have to evaluate these projects. There's a lot of competition. We put in a 19-page proposal, so we've got a really good, well-crafted project. So that's off to Charlie, Steve, city staff, and along with the base leadership, and Katie Wolf. It wasn't her project, George Renova, but she committed a lot of time and energy on the, we're seeing the thing, she's a professional grant writer. If you don't know Katie, she knows how to ask for money. She knows how to ask for it well, effectively, and so she landed her time at town. So anyway, we're hopeful. We'll know in a few months. Are we fair? I'm not going to touch on 600 Wall, Little Boys and Girls Club, except it's exciting to see activity in Northside Town. Good to see some activity over there. I do have developer interest for the former Alpine Power Company site on the river. We've got two different developers who are expressing interest in that. We have got a program in place with the NBC to market that, so we're bringing hopefully more than just two. I think competition is good. And so shining light with the NBC on our project helps us also secure funding from the NBC of the city, and I think will be needed to make that project move forward. So that's planned for this fall. Then touching on things outside, I know this is the city report, but to me, if it benefits, if it benefits the area, it's good for the city. That's why I bother to keep these in the report. We've got a developer with property on M32, Trunkovers and Myers Gas Station, and I talked with them today. They're getting very close to getting leases signed for franchises. I've got it limited to discuss who it is at this point here because they want to get those leases in place, but I will say that it would be great additions to our community once it gets announced. And their plan is to still have this, you know, started here, I'm supposed to have set plans tonight from them. And we're talking Nathan Skibby and Soke, and I'll be collaborating on that. So their goal is to have permits in hand this fall and get construction started this fall and turn it over by March, so it could be open next summer. South corridor, I just mentioned it, we got the former Dunkin' Donuts, which is a blighted property in the township for a long time, which has been remodeled, not OBEF, but being close, F and K, the former Thompson Sales Service Location, being repurposed. Nice to see that investment as well. South side of town still could use more love and attention. Bird King not looking very good sitting out there. There's a few other things that really do need to be sold and moved and enhanced to somebody else who, you know, put a little time and energy into the rehabilitation. But anyway, it's nice to see a couple of things happening down there. And then other projects going on, I mentioned Ace Hardware. It's glad to see that's finally really taken shape now. And then of course, we know the State's GPT, Relight Cinema, former antique mall, open in various states of kind of demolition right now. And I learned today that, I should know this, but I learned today that Tractor Supply has plans to expand and puts capital into their location there at Griffley Street Station, adding a greenhouse and some other things to that here in that few recent timeframe. So I'm glad to know that, let's face it, that property sat there, you know, largely empty for a long time. So it's good to see some, some investment there and maybe it'll spur some other interest in some of those locations. I'm not going to touch on the SBC, the information is in here. I'm going to mention the DEA. I mentioned in our report here that we successfully de-federalized our revolving loan fund. And it was originally established through the economic, the DEA, federal government entity, put money in along with Alpena County. With this opportunity to de-federalize it, we were successful. We applied in May, we were granted it in June. I returned the county the money today, $100,000 is what they put in, which is why that fund only served Alpena County. And now we, in that board meeting last week, we had pressed the county applying to the County of Mount Ramsey County as eligible counties to, small businesses operating in those counties could borrow money from our organization. And so anyway, so we've opened that up effective immediately. So I'm glad that we know why we're having the incumbents in place of having that, that federal government up here on our shoulder. Final thoughts, you know, like you opened me, our town looks great today. The downtown looks better than I've been seeing in 23 years I could appear. Our community, I've got so many anecdotal stories I could share with you from people coming into the Chamber Office who've never been to Alpena, but have heard about Alpena. Just getting so much more attention. I talked to, I talked to a realtor from Traverse City last week. He called me on Thursday. He's got some, he's got some ties to this area and spent time, spends time up in Hubbard Lake, and he was telling me that he's focusing all his energy in this side of the state for so many reasons. One is it's a lot more attractive. People in Traverse City are doing a lot of traffic, the boss is doing business over there. He says, and I see so much improvement in Alpena. There's a lot more demand and interest, and a lot more attention to this side of the state right now. So I'm excited by, you know, excited to have that happening in our midst right now. Heading under the radar here a couple of weeks ago, filming, having, or the bag under Gilchrist here a couple of weeks ago, taking it for the city. That, that level of exposure is so terrific and just continuing to, I think, create more interest in our area. And so we get some of these projects to pop that, you know, that are included in this report here, and I just think we're poised right now to do quite a lot. I'm just genuinely excited. Obviously, I can't do it without the support of the city. So I appreciate what you guys have done. I appreciate the relationship I have with Rachel and city staff. Sometimes I feel like a city employee. There are times I spend a lot of time in this building, I have DEA and Ralph Field, and it's all good. So I will stop talking and I'm listening to your questions. I will, I'll be glad to entertain them. I think Bill's going to set the timer. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you supporting. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Announcement this evening. Oh, we're going to receive file that, sorry. Dave?
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting. So the announcement this evening is that nominating petitions are due July 20th, which I believe is tomorrow, at 4:00 p.m. for council candidates to be placed on the ballot for the November 2nd, 2021 election. On that.
We have five candidates.
Awesome. All right, so far. No proclamations, report of officers. First is designation of the voting delegate for the annual Michigan Municipal League Meeting held September 22nd, 2021, and the designation of an alternate voting delegate. In the past, this has always been the city manager with me as the alternate. I talked to Rachel, she's fine with that. I have absolutely no idea what I might be doing on that day. Neither did we any other year. We didn't either. Just kind of kept in touch and somebody, somebody was there. Unless there's any opposition to that.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, please. So I made that virtual first.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? And Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is the fourth quarter fiscal year 21 financial report.
All right, so this is at 100% of budget since it's at June 30, 2021. The first column, the original budget, you look way down at the bottom. It must be on your screens. Okay. So down at the bottom, the original budget was to add to fund balance of $48,201. Over the course of the fiscal year, we amended that and lowered it to $18,951 to be added to fund balance. As of June 30th, without any sort of year-end adjusting entry or accrual, we are $192,343 to the good. So that looks really promising. But like I said, there's, there's, you know, many adjustments that need to take place yet. So going up into the green section, the revenue. Overall, we are at 94% of our amended budget, and some of those variances, I put off to the right side there. Ones that I'll touch on are the cemetery is at 83% of budget. That was because we had overestimated the revenue for burials and lots. Also, interest received perpetual lot care is down. Police is at 93% revenue, and that is because we've received minimal revenue for liquor licenses. Buyer EMS is at 76%. So within that department is the EMS revenue line, and we've only received 59% of budget. So that is one where we normally do a big accrual at the end of the fiscal year. So that will help a lot. Also in that department, LDT transfers are down. Touched on the general entry. Okay. In public works, we are at 83%. We had budgeted for the recycling grant, and we, so we've expensed, but we haven't paid for anything yet. Or no, we, we haven't received the funds yet. That's what that is. We have not received the grant money yet because we haven't submitted any expenses yet. Lights is at 34%. We overestimated the, I'm not, I don't remember what our thinking was here, but our original budget was $1,000 revenue, and we bumped it up to $18,925. But we've only received $6,500. So I'm not quite sure. I don't, I don't recall exactly what we were thinking there, but, so we're only at 34%. Parks and Rec is at 27, almost 28%. Looks like we had anticipated a donation and we haven't received it yet. Moving down to the expenditures, the only one that is not really in line is the other financing uses, which is at just under 61%. We have not transferred funds from the general fund to the building inspection fund because we are waiting for an exact amount. So once we do those entries and get those posted, we can So once we do those entries and get those posted, we can get a better idea of what we need to transfer. So total expenditures are at 92% of budget. So that's good. It's always good to see revenue further ahead than expenses. We go over to the second page.
So you'll, I guess before you move on too much though, so that $17,925 that was amended into the lights budget, you're, you're going to look back into that. That could be an adjustment later, I guess, to rectify that perhaps, or?
Yeah, I can, well, we're not going to adjust the budget anymore at this point. It's too late for that.
Right.
So it'll just, it's just as the way it is.
There it is.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so second page, the cash balances and investments. You can see that the D D A is at a D D A number five. So this is Fund 217. That fund is short on cash by $494. Expenses are outpacing revenue. It's using up cash and fund balance. Funds will be transferred from D D A number two to cover the shortfall. The stores cash is at zero and that is because they were negative and we only transferred enough from the general fund to end that zero. That was intentional. And then I don't really see any other issues and going down to the retiree healthcare. So we are with cash and investments, we're at 1.71 million for book value. And last quarter, book value was at 1.73. The market value at June 30 is 2.02 million as compared to, or as compared to 1.97 million at March 31st. So that went up a little bit. The pension fund is at 25.4 million in book value. Last quarter, fixed income was at 8.37 million. Now it's at 8.5. Equities are at 16.7, or they were at 16.7, now they're at 16.3. The market value of the pension at June 30 is 32.76 million as compared to 31.8 million at March 31st. So that's good. Any questions on that?
I just have one question. Are we going to pursue the Community Foundation for the Cemetery?
Yes, so a couple of weeks ago, I reached out to the finance director with the City of Zeeland. And he was on vacation and he did not get back to me yet. So maybe I should reach back out to him. But they have it and I would just was, I wanted to ask him how it was going and how it worked. And so I was trying to get some background information. But at some point, I would like to bring in Patrick. Aggertie?
Here it is.
Is that what? My apologies. So I'd like to bring him in at some point. I think we need to talk to him first, bring him in for a meeting and then, then we could do a presentation and hopefully go that route. But I want to make sure they have everything in place.
That's it, that's all my questions.
All right. Mike's not here, so you're off the hook. He should only have a few, sorry. So proceed.
I may be able to see you follow the fourth quarter financial report. Support.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Sure. Next up, we have new business. And it's the Marina Operations Agreement. Shannon Smolinski, the Harbor Master is here.
On August 31st, 2021, the contract between Thunder Bay Shores Marine and City of Alpena will expire. The contract allows for continuation of the contract. Both parties are willing to negotiate the contract for one additional year. With the realization that the marina is an intricate part of our downtown, there's a new focus on revitalizing the area into a showcase within the city. In December, the condition and operations of the marina were discussed with our Harbor Advisory Committee members. During the meeting, several deficiencies were discussed as outlined in the attached minutes. At that time, the city began to review the contracts, conditions of the marina, and the operations contracts. To evaluate the validity of the concerns that the members had brought forth, shortly after my deployment as Harbor Master, I developed a correction, corrective action plan to outline the deficiencies that were discovered within the marina. After review of the contract between the city and Thunder Bay Shores, this list was further divided between the responsibilities of the city and Thunder Bay Shores. The city's action list was attached for your review. In February, per the contract, Thunder Bay Shores was put on notice of the concerns the city had with the marina's operation and their contractual obligations. At that time, with the understanding that little could be done because of the winter months, the city requested a written corrective action plan from Thunder Bay Shores. It was discussed with the marina operator, the desire for a large portion of our corrective action requests to be addressed prior to the voters arriving back on site for the season, with the original tentative significant completion date of May 1st, which was eventually extended to June 1st. The city, in good faith and to see progress on the projects, agreed to complete a few of the items on their list. In May, the city hired an employee dedicated to the marina to add to the revitalization process. Since this date, the city has worked towards cleaning up several areas within the marina that have become ice layers. We have also focused on addressing several safety concerns with the docks. After working with Thunder Bay Shores this season, it has become apparent that we do not share a mutual vision of what the marina can become. While Thunder Bay Shores has provided great customer service in face of the marina for several years, the city's desire to switch directions and push to the next level are not a shared priority or goal. During the June Harbor Advisory Meeting, my recommendation not to re, to renew their contract was discussed with committee members who voted in support of my decision. Several opinions were explored by staff for continued operations of the marina. One opinion, which has been explored several times over the years, is to take, for the city to take control of the operations within the marina. Limit, which would include the grounds and maintenance, dockhands duties, sale of fuel and ice, maintenance of all the buildings in general, and all responsibilities that would be covered under full operations of the marina. As stated earlier, we already employ Jason Zaski as a full-time marine employee who will currently cover the grounds Thursday through Sunday. His duties will also include operating the bridge for the blast bottom boat tours during that time. Since May, Jason has made substantial progress in cleaning and repairing the marina grounds. The proposed plan includes hiring another dedicated marina employee to mirror the current schedule. These two employees would continue to cover the bridge operations as part of their duties. Since then, anticipated the pair would be able to cover the full-time operations of the marina with the assistance of several dockhands. While Jason and I have been focusing on the revitalization of the grounds facilities, we have been paying attention to the actual operations of the marina to observe what will be required to service the voters utilizing the marina. Thunder Bay Shores currently employs several dockhands who are trained in their duties and responsibilities. These young men and women have impressed me this summer with their good work ethic and desire to provide great customer service to our visiting voters. It would be my intention to hire any of the existing employees who would be willing to remain on as dockhands and could pass our pre-employment screen. This would be, would provide us with experienced staff who could assist us in learning the ropes and continuing a great customer service already provided. The Harbor Advisory Committee did express two concerns during our discussion. The first was concern was the lifting and lowering of boats. It is not an easy task and should not be undertaken by somebody without substantial knowledge of the process. Several times over the past few months, different voters has expressed their worries about the boathoist operations. Most of these conversations also included the voter's comfort level with the existing two head dockhands and the job they have done for several years. After discussions with the pair, a preliminary, preliminary plan has been developed to contract with their company Allmarine to raise and lower the boats. The fee charged for the raise and lowers is still under negotiations. But will probably closely mirror what is already being done. This group has over 20 years of experience doing this job. And the voters, more importantly, are comfortable with the service that these two are already providing them. And a lot of it does run down to our voters feeling comfortable with who's running that lift. The second concern voiced by the Harbor Advisory Committee was that Alpena remain a full-service marine, marina. This includes the continued presence of both a marina store and an onsite repair shop. To them, this includes the continued presence. The existing shop and store will be closed on August 31st when the contract expires. Thunder Bay Shores will have until June 30th to vacate the premises. Currently, the next closest facilities for repairs are in Chivoygen and Augrey. Under ideal conditions, it will take 10 hours at regular cruising speed to get between these two ports. This time, it's substantially increased capable of having problems. For that reason, we feel it's important to continue having a marina store fund and a repair shop on site. For this reason, a request for proposals will be forthcoming to solicit businesses for the marina. With ongoing concerns about the handling of the corrective action plan this spring, staff may provisions and the current budget for implementation of the above plan if the need warranted. For this reason, it is my recommendation as a Harbor Master not to extend the contract with Thunder Bay Shores Marine and to end our relationship with them per our current contract expiration date on August 31st, 2021. I further recommend council approval, the plan for the city to assume operations of the marina, solicit proposals from various vendors to continue the boat repairs and boat store services for the marina, and also pursue a multi-year, multi-year contract with Allmarine beginning September 1st, 2021 for travel lift operational services.
And Shannon did say September, or excuse me, June 30th, but it's September 30th that they have to vacate.
Oh, no, it's, it's a lot.
So the, the question I have, I just, I think it's absolutely fantastic what you guys have been doing so far and I don't really have any issue with this. Rich and his crew have done a great job and it really saved us for many years by staying there. But with that said, I got a little bit of a question as far as that, because I'm not a Great Lakes boat person. Got a little bit of a question about that staying as a repair facility. So, so if someone comes into our harbor and to our marina and they have boat repair issues and they have to remove the boat from the water to get it repaired, that, that's, that's what we're, that's what we do currently now?
Correct.
And so they, I'm sorry, but they hoist it out and then there's a garage there basically and they do the repairs there. So, so is it possible if we don't have that facility right on site at the marina that those boats can be removed and taken to a marina that we do have? Because we have marinas in the area that do do repairs.
Yeah, what you would get into with it, Matt, is these boats that we're talking about are big boats. They're not, you know, if it can be trailered, yeah, it can be trailered to a different marine. The first obstacle you would have to get around is these boats would have to be on a special trailer to be moved. And then they would have to be short enough to get under all the power lines between here and that other.
Okay, and right now they're, it's not that far from the hoist to the, to the repair facility. How do they move them? Do they put blocks? They don't? Okay.
No, usually they, they are picked up, if they need to be picked up, they're picked up on the lift and blocked up there by the repair shop where their repairs are made. And then they're lifted back into the water.
Okay.
For example, we had a 35 footer that came in today on trailer and was offloaded, but it was also short enough that it could do that. You go over there right now, there's a ripple effect boat sitting there. I can't tell you the link because I can't remember, but you can actually put that on a trailer and move it out of, you know, to a marine to fix it.
That was kind of it. I just kind of wanted to get a feel for why, why the facility has to be right there.
And that's, that's a lot of it. It's if you're dealing with larger boats who are having issues at that point in time, it's, again, you just have to absolutely move them around.
Some of the concern, Mr. Mayor, is just, it's not even the big boats that have to get pulled out. It's the, it's the guy who needs to do bill foam. And those kinds of facilities aren't, Shannon was talking about Chivoygen and Augrey, you know, being town or the park, those are the big boats. Some of the big boats we can't pick up. They're too big, they're too wide, we won't fit them flip. But they were just, the Harvard Advisory speaking in general, they want some type of mechanic present. And so the guys at the boat house on 23 North, they're not only working on boats all the time. The truth of the matter is, a lot of the voters that keep their boats in season flip not utilize those mechanics. They have their own mechanic. The guys that are at the smaller marines, the grand lake and long lake, they come to this marine group's boat well.
I, okay. So that, and that would continue even if, because a guy could call anybody he wants his boats. A voter could call anyone he wants, even if there's someone on site.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any concerns other than budget. And I know it's hard to budget for something you don't know what to do.
Yeah. And we spent a lot of time this, this spring as we were developing that budget, looking at past financial reports given to us by Thunder Bay Shores. I think I did wage numbers 17 ways to, to Sunday, trying to figure out what the budget was going to be, how many people we really needed down there. Trying to figure everything out, looking at going through and did budgets based off of repairs that need to be done. Assuming that fuel numbers were consistent across the years, this is how we kind of tried to budget as close as we could.
Yeah, I mean, the goal would be, and I think it may take some time. Within the timeframe of five years, I would like to see it self-sustaining, if not before. And that, but we have some work to do out there.
Yeah, we do. But it's fantastic that. So I guess from us, what to need from?
Over the reputation.
Yeah.
To, to end the contract.
Yeah, for us not to continue the contract was the first one. And then that we pursue those other contracts and take over operations.
Would that be the same motion, Bill?
I would say make two separate motions. One, just to not renew any further. I know we do need it. I don't know, you know, off the top of your head, it's been renewed multiple times.
They've been there for 20 some years.
So just to let it, let it expire at the end of the effective date, which I believe is August 31st. And then separate motion to allow staff to proceed with, trying to get any folks in there to do it. Those, those will come back for approval once they're in place. Okay.
Isn't there a third one?
So there's a third one as well for pursuing a multi-year contract with Allmarine. You still want to pursue that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so there's basically three, yeah.
So I'll start with the first one. And I need that we let the contract with Thunder Bay Shores and Marina, Marina, and to August 31st.
Mayor Walagora? Councilwoman Hess?
Yeah.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion clear.
And my, the second motion would be to approve the city. Some plan for the city to assume operations and solicit proposals from various vendors to continue to provide boat repair and store services for the voters.
Using.
That was the last. Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Motion clear.
And I move for your adjourned conference session to discuss and update regarding, discuss and update regarding proposed locations of the Elkhina prototype bio primary of LC and Grand Bio.
Or?
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Motion clear.
And I move for your adjourned conference session to discuss and update regarding, discuss and update regarding proposed locations of the Elkhina prototype bio primary of LC and Grand Bio.
Or?
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Motion clear.
And for our virtual guests, we will not be taking any action after we return to open session. We will just basically be adjourned. Stay on there if you like, but that's all we'll have.
Yeah.
I'm muted.
So I move for your adjourned.